All right, it's six o'clock. I will call the October 12th, 2021, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Tobin from the St. Paul United Methodist Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
May we pray? God, I thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight with this room full of community leaders. We each in our own world have authority, and we ask, oh, God, that you would bless the work of this committee and this community. But, Lord, I ask for more than that. I ask for wisdom. It seems sometimes when the resources are limited, we need your guidance because decisions are made and things don't go the way we would want them to. But it seems to me, Lord, that when resources are plentiful, we need your wisdom even more because the stakes are higher. I'm reminded of Solomon, your servant, who came to the throne. You told him you'd give him anything he asked for, and he asked for wisdom, and the word says that pleased you. May the work of this committee and the citizens of our communities please you as we use your wisdom to go forward into an unknown future. We pray these things in the name of the Christ who said he came to serve and not be served. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is Citizens' Time. I don't believe we had anybody sign it. Is that correct, Mr. Colvin? Move into the payment of invoices, entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Hornet. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aha.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from September the 28th, 2021. Make a motion to approve. Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
All abstain, I wasn't present.
Aha.
Aha. All abstain, as I was a present.
Aha.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business. Before we move into that, we have Mr. Duncan from Retreat Town Council here this evening, and they have a council meeting at seven. So we'll move on to under new business. The Retreat Rescue Squad request.
First, I'll thank y'all for moving the agenda up. But we here basically just to brief y'all on what the changes we've done with Retreat Rescue Squad, where we stand at today and where we are moving forward. As most of you know, we have a new commander. Leanne was resigned on her own. With that, we lost two other board members. And since that time, we have regained two new board members, as well as Sally is now the interim captain slash administrator. Our biggest, last time we met, our biggest expense, of course, was payroll. Since that time, we have readjusted our billing, but payroll was still one of our biggest expense. Due to the fact that, on an average day, we still have to maintain about $800 per day to maintain two people all day long. We're not coping that back from the insurance company. So we're already in a negative every day. We have increased the billing. We have reached out to AMB to look at our codes and our expenses. So we may be adjusting that here in the near future. But also, with that being said, this past week, we did see an increase in our calls. It had previously been down about 20 to 25 percent. So this past week, it has increased, which will definitely help offset the payroll. And then I'll let Sally and Roger.
Thanks.
We have gone back since January the first and started rebilling some of the calls that were self-paid, deemed self-paid. We have found some that has insurance. That's as far back as we can go. Some insurances don't pay past 90 days of the bill. We're working with AMB to rebuild those calls. We have seen some increase in the billing. It is going to be a process to get this called up and to get the money back in. Last month, we billed $35,000 with Medicare and Medicaid adjustments. We only received $11,000 of that money because of Medicare and Medicaid. We have visited with AMB to do our codes and do some, what we call hard billing in the future. So we're just, we're climbing out of the hole, so.
Yeah, it's a slow climb, but we're getting there.
It's going to take some time, but we have seen some improvement as far as money and personnel. And we have cut our payroll, cut our overtime. We've hired a new intermediate, which will take more of the overtime away. Due to people having COVID and having to be quarantined and things like that, and I know a lot of people blame stuff on COVID, but we are face-to-face with it, so we've had some that have had to be quarantined and people making up for that. So hopefully, this is, that's on the downslide, so, like I said, we have hired more staffing to take away the overtime. So, do you guys have questions, concerns?
I do have one question, just to reiterate. Last meeting, we was able to transfer the $32,000, I believe, over to our operation expenses. I just wanted to get clarification from the board. How do y'all want, how do y'all expect us to request that money from y'all? I've heard different things. I've even thrown a great round, some people was complaining because we requested it. It was my understanding that money was set aside mainly for our payroll slash operation. And then, of course, with us being short on income, that every payroll, we are to request that money as soon as we can. So I really just want to get clarification and to make sure we're all on the same page. I've heard different amounts, that it's supposed to be limited to $5,000. Is it supposed to be all the payroll for the two weeks? I mean, basically, just get us all on the same page.
When, when we met before, there is $32,000 that was carried over from fiscal year '21 for payroll support for the squad. When we had those conversations back during the budget time, we did talk about a $5,000 per request limit. Since they have not requested any to this point, if you want that to be a higher amount, then you can authorize any or all of it to be transferred to the squad. And we did have some conditions that we suggested you consider as part of any funds that you may want to transfer to.
We'll take all of it.
Make it easier on y'all.
Easier on the taxes.
Mike, have you, have you seen the recommendations, what, what we got in our package about the?
I don't think I have.
You haven't seen them, sorry.
Do you, do you want to go over that, Mr. Hankins, or?
Yes, sir. We, we, Mr. McCabe and I had some, some conversations, and the, the board members and representatives tonight have gone over some of those. We suggested that they should continue to look at their spending, adjust their overtime, and enact staffing policies that do reduce the overall spending. We've had those conversations. Let the squad report any staffing changes that it, that it makes to Mr. McCabe, so we can sort of get an idea of how they're doing overall in terms of number of personnel. Let the squad submit a monthly comprehensive financial, financial report, just, you know, what your current position is to Mr. McCabe every month, showing the, the current cash balance, current savings, any monthly expenses or monthly revenue, and then a billing summary to Mr. McCabe for review. So again, we can get some idea of where they're at. And that, this is the one that I hesitate to throw out, that a designated county representative be given notice of and attend the squad board meeting so that we can offer input and advice and communicate more directly with the, the board.
No problem.
No problem at all.
And I think that was, I think that was a problem before is just a lack of communication.
Right.
And I think, I mean, I think y'all worked to fix that with, with Mr. McCabe or Ms. Hankins.
That's the hesitation, Mr. Chairman.
I knew where you were going with that.
As he looks around the room.
You know, Mr. Barr lives up there.
Mr. Barr said rolls downhill.
See, Shura's on top of the hill, and everyone goes down.
I would just like to comment. I mean, I appreciate, I know y'all have had some tough choices to make over the last few months. I know you're making changes. You're still looking at making changes. Is there a dollar figure right now that would help? I mean, obviously, you say $32,000, but I, I like, you know, sort of saying, give some of it, and then, you know, we can, you know, then you can get the financial reports in here and release more of it in the process. I don't think there's going to be a lack of support of getting you what you need up here, as long as you're making the necessary changes.
We requested $15,000 is what I turned in.
Okay.
So that's what I requested.
Well, we're, you just done second quarter allocation.
Yes.
So $16,000 is half of that.
Yep, not any problem at all.
Does that hurt y'all if we do more than the $5,000 out of purposes or anything like that, or no? Because it's already budgeted items, so.
No, no, it wouldn't hurt anything.
Okay.
Okay. I guess really, only other issue is the fuel, and I think we'll have a meeting on that, correct?
I'm meeting with Jimmy on Thursday to go over everything to make sure the cards are lining up correctly.
We start volunteering people for meetings, and Jimmy left. He got scared, didn't he?
Yeah.
I will add, moving forward, I'm glad that you are making improvements, and I know you're working really hard on it, but you all quit coming to our Fire and Rescue Committee meetings a long time ago. And I know you're busy, and you can't, not everyone can make them, I understand. But since there have, have been a lot of changes recently, I would really like to maybe get together at some point in the near future just to look at the whole game plan, look at the recommendations, and just really, that way, we can all understand everything. We've had to do it in the past with Lead Mines and with County, so I think it's time. I think it will help all of us.
Absolutely.
Will you send me an email reminding me of that meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I have Monday nights, I have several other things.
Yeah.
Because I'm on the fire department.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we, we don't even have to do the Fire and Rescue Full Committee. You know, we could just sit down, a couple of us, and Jimmy and Mr. Hankins, and just kind of look at everything.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be beneficial.
Anytime.
Absolutely, yeah. Just let us know when you're, any of you are free, and we'll, we'll make the work.
We'll get something planned.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we'll notify y'all of the next board meeting. We, we have it on Thursday nights. We start at five. We've got them cut down to two hours once a month, where it used to be four hours twice a month. And the changes we've made in the board is really going to help us.
Absolutely.
Donnie Buck and Lori and Ryan as the new board members.
Great, so.
And also, we are doing, redoing our bylaws as well as a employee handbook. And I think it's something that we should discuss as a county wide anyway, because there's no reason, I mean, whatever affects Retreat should be the same for Lead Mines or whatever, as a county as a whole. And that's what them other EO meetings should be about as well, so.
Right. Sounds like you're on the right track.
Yeah, we can just stay on it.
Mr. Barr, do we need to take any action? I mean, we've already.
I would, I mean, it's approved, and as long as you all have no objections, we'll authorize a payment of $16,000. If you all would like to make a motion of that, to, to go ahead and do that, since typically, we've not been funding payroll, I think it'd be, would be fine to do so.
I'll make that motion. Have a motion by Mr. Hornet to release $16,000 from the carryover funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion?
And just for clarification, you said carryover funds, Mr. Chairman, that's correct, just for the public. This is already budgeted funds, so this is not anything that's been added into the budget. It was already sitting there.
And just for further clarification, we can do a manual check and get them their, their funding sooner if that's needed, if you want to include that as part of the motion.
I recommend that, Mr. Hornet.
That's fine.
I can pick it up Thursday when I meet with Jimmy, if you want to wait that long or whatever.
We'll see if we can do it that quick.
Okay, sounds good. Did he leave again? He left again?
Yeah, there's those home on Main Street.
Is there any more comments, questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aha.
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 So approved.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Chairman of the board, I'd like to thank all of you for this. I'm going to put a plug in for the fire department. We have a barbecue in twenty seconds.
Well, are you going to use the new grill that, that, that?
It's like this, the new grill, I only do four, and I had to cook 64, so I don't think that would work. So you can just cook 60 on one four mill.
So if you guys need any information from, just email us or call us, and we'll get whatever and send back the information. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Sally, if you can get anything else, town council might also.
Now I gotta go up there and go, please, thank y'all.
All right, we'll get back on the agenda with old business. First item under old business is appointments. Mr. Barr, do we have any?
We still have that Mount Rogers Planning District Commission position open. I don't know that we've received any applications on anything recently. We can put something out on our social media if you'd like, to see if we could have someone that may have an interest in doing that, if no one has any names.
That's what I, give Ms. Sweeney something to do.
Okay.
I thought she was in here. Anything else under appointments?
Yes, sir.
Anything else under old business?
I do not have anything else, sir.
Moving on to new business, the first item is the 2018 Building Code update.
Mr. Taylor has provided us this information. He's not able to be here with us tonight, so if there's any questions, I'll have him come back at a future meeting. But basically, the new code cycle has been into effect, that there's a grace period of one year until June 30th of 2022 to be able to use the 2015 Building Code. They've been sharing this information with, with the people that are working, that they're working with and on their website and those items. So it's just for informational item to let you be aware.
Next item is the VDM grant budget correction. Mr. Hankins, is this yours?
It is. This is a technical request. When we did the budget for this year, we'd already accepted the $49,804 grant from Virginia Department of Emergency Management for local planning. You've funded the local part in the current budget, but the current, the budget doesn't show the, the state dollars. So if we can add that back in with this appropriation, that would be helpful, so we can go ahead and spend that on our comprehensive plan.
So we need to amend and appropriate?
$49,804, which will make that new, that line item, new total, $99,804.
Entertain a motion to amend and appropriate to?
I'll make a motion to re- appropriate $49,804 Virginia Department of Emergency Management for local planning.
Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion?
That motion's for the 99, 804?
That's the new line.
The new total.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aha.
Aha.
Yeah.
Aha.
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 So approved. Next item is the Virginia Rail Access Resolution.
This is, we are eligible for application up to $450,000 from Industrial Access Rail Program. Mr. Hankins assisted greatly in preparing this and getting the information to fill this out. I would request that you all approve Resolution 2021-33 for us to make our application for rail funding to support the rail infrastructure to Lot 24.
Open the floor for motion for Resolution 2021-33.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aha.
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 Yeah.
Aha.
Aha.
So approved. We did the Rescue Squad, so 2021 redistricting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I shared this information previously at, at the last meeting. I met with Brandon Moore and Mr. Hankins last week, and we reviewed all the districts. One of our challenges is, if you look at the map on page 55, I guess it is, 54, 55, we aren't exactly certain where the final breakdown will be for our split on our House of Delegates seats. But right now, that proposed split is running, if I remember correctly, between Black Lick and West Whitfield, between Spiegel and West Whitfield, on down between Spiegel and Lead Mines, with, with one house bit on the left and one house bit on the right. That creates sort of a wall. If we start making any district changes on our own, and I'll just use an example of, in order to add population to Black Lick District, if we went up and added a little area next to 52 into the Black Lick District to, to bring that population up a little bit higher, because we had to take some of the population away to give it to Spiegel to bring it up, then we end up with the House of Delegates line that's going to follow the old line, and then we've got this new line, and we end up with a split precinct in there like we currently have in the House District. And that means you've got 50 people or 100 people that have to have different ballots. We have to ask waivers every year now for doing so. With the numbers that we have, and as we presented last time, all of our districts are still within the plus or minus 5 percent variance. And staff's recommendation is with, with that, that we proceed, that you authorize the staff and county attorney to proceed with drafting the 2021 redistricting documents using the same districts as they currently are in existence. Mr. Terry doesn't care. He's got all the same amount either way.
Well, the only complaint I heard was from Coy. He's been wanting my swimming pool out there at Retreat Lake. All right, so you just need a action from us to keep the?
I would request action to, to, to direct the county administrator and county attorney to draft the necessary ordinance and set the public hearing for redistricting the districts as they currently are.
You heard Mr. Barr. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion?
Sorry.
Do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aha.
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 So approved. I'd just like to say that With County Board of Supervisors is more efficient than the Commonwealth of Virginia. Anything else under new business, Mr. Barr?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I see you in the back. Do you have anything? Right, we'll move into board reports. First item is Budget Committee. Mr. Smith?
The Budget Committee met on October 7th, 2021, and makes the following recommendations. Approve and fund it for the following civic organizations and to amend and appropriate $13,500 to account 1101-457015. Feed in America Southwest Virginia $2,000, Junior Appalachian Musicians $3,000, Retreat Depot Foundation $2,500, Southwest Virginia Alliance for Manufacturing $1,000, the Museum of Whitfield for $5,000.
Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion?
I have a quick question. Was there a reason we weren't doing the full $6,000 for the museums of Whitfield? I believe we did $6,000, it looks like, in 2020, $5,000 last year. They requested $6,000 this year, but you all recall there was a certain reason?
I think during the meeting, you just, was funding all of it at the same level of the previous year.
I'd really love to see that get back up to $6,000, because I understand it's Whitfield, but, you know, those museums benefit all the county kids, like the, every second grader in the county goes to the May Day. Some of that funding goes toward it, so really, I'd really like to see it back up to the $6,000. And they're pretty good about giving us back what's not used.
Is there any more questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aha.
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 So approved.
I'm meaning an appropriating $3,650 to account 1204-430150, Revenue Code 11003-319200 to accommodate payment for With County Arbitrage Services.
Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aha.
Aha.
Yeah.
Aha.
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 So approved.
I'm meaning an appropriating $7,176 to account 8110-470010 for the purchase of a water trailer system. It is noted that the water trailer system will be available for use by the county since purchased with With County funds.
Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aha.
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 Yeah.
Aha.
Aha.
So approved. Anything else from the Budget Committee, Mr. Smith?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to Board and Supervisors' time. Mr. Smith, I'll go ahead and start.
Just following up, haven't heard anything back on the Route 52 on the sewers, Mr. Barr, and that we talked about. If you could follow up on that for me, and then also, I know this is more for Coy's district. Haven't heard anything back on the water issue for the Blair family that was needing access to either come under the trail or down beside the trail. I did reach out to Delegate Campbell as well to try to get some support at Richmond level to speed the process up. So I haven't heard anything back from him yet.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll just comment. I, Mr. Blair was actually in a parking lot, and I spent about 15 minutes talking to him right before the meeting. The easement across the trail has become more expensive than what was originally considered. Still looking at the option of possibly running a private service line on the other side. I talked with a gentleman from, from Richmond today with, I guess, maybe Department of General Services, Real Estate Division. Mr. Blair is going to come to the Water Committee meeting next Tuesday at 9:30 to discuss the options there.
All right, thanks, sir.
Where do they live at?
Brought it to Campbell Line off of Carby Road. I don't know what the other road is in there. I don't remember. And the reason I was asking, his daughter, I'd actually ran into her over the weekend, she was asking.
Anything else, Mr.?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cook? Yes, Mr. Barr, could we, could we have the extra $1,000 for the museum added to the Budget Committee's agenda next time? So that we can, because I think that, that needs to be done also. I agree with Ms. Lawson. The school definitely benefits from that, and so does the citizens, so I'd like to see another $1,000 given to the museum. We'll do so. Anything else, Mr. Cook? That'll, that'll be all, sir. Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. McRoberts? Mr. McCroberts?
Yeah, I have one, don't say, uh, Evelyn Crockett, VDOT will have somebody at her place Wednesday morning to look at her problem.
Is that there, Blair, Blair Road?
Blair Road.
Yeah, okay. Do you need anyone from the county staff attending that or anything?
Well, she technically didn't ask if we would be there, but I just thought I'd go, I won't know what's going on.
For those who don't know, she's continued to have drainage problems down through there that Mr. McCroberts has been trying to work with VDOT for quite some time and trying to get her issues addressed, so.
Anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hornet?
I don't believe I have anything at this moment.
Mr. Terry?
Uh, the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is just, thank you to everyone of y'all. I think about everybody reached out and checked on me and Tammy through our sickness and illness. It was rough, but I really appreciate you guys. I apologize to all you men sitting up here with me for not being here through this process. And I apologize to the citizens for not serving it for the previous two meetings, but we're back on track now. Again, your kindness and your well wishes and your prayers mean everything, and I certainly appreciate it, as did my wife. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The only thing I have is I thank Ms. Lawson for running the meeting, last meeting I was in Virginia Beach. Stuck in the elevator. Of all places. Thanks to everybody that made it out for the, for the big announcement with Blue Star. It was well attended. I, I've already reached out and thanked everybody, but I'll, I'll do it again. Mr. Manley's not here, but, you know, everybody in this room had a, somehow had a finger on that project. It was really hard to keep it a secret. I'm glad that we could tell everybody and heard a lot of scuttlebutt about the twenty-four hundred jobs, it really ain't twenty-four hundred jobs, that's capital construction people. No, it's not, though. Those are honest to goodness jobs and, like I told Millie with the paper, I mean, it's, it's a game changer for West County. I think the paper done a really good article about how the project first started and they reached out to Danny McDaniel him and Coy and Gene and Gary Howson, and I guess you'd sit up here and name a bunch of people. Some of those folks took a beating over the years having a twenty million dollar hay field. And, but it, it paid off. And, and like I told them, it was nice to be at the end of the race, but, you know, they started the race. And the way the world is today, you don't get much good news, so it was kinda, kinda nice. The only thing, and, and I don't know what the answer is, Mr. Bear. Apparently, VDOT has a problem with sheriff's office putting their speed sign up on VDOT signs. That is probably the most ludicrous thing I've ever heard of. And, you know, they put it up in Spiegel on the school zone sign, trying to slow people down in the school zone. And they took objection to that.
I never stood wasn't there very long.
I, cause they called and complained. That's, if you can find out what the policy is and we can reach out to Delegate Campbell and Senator Pille and Senator Sutterman, that's ridiculous. I mean, there's no other way to, you know, you're trying to slow people down, you know, it's not a yard sale sign. Maybe that's just me, but, you know, that's the craziest thing I've ever heard, but.
I concur, I, I, I'm used to seeing the ones in rural retreat that they put up every once in a while. And Ms. Heath reached out to me and said, there's signs on, the, the signs over in Spiegel that's, you know, the speed limit's slowing people down. I thought maybe Ms. Myers had put up some signs over there to slow people down and I sent an email to the Sheriff Foster and they said, yeah, they're our signs, so I think it is crazy, they do a good job of trying to slow people down. We will continue to try to work with VDOT to see what the regulation is and then with our legislators to see if there's anything we can do to.
I mean, if that's some kind of policy, it needs to change. I mean, Sheriff, how many calls do you get a year if people want you to put that sign up in their neighborhood? Cause it does work.
We actually reached out to her. It's all well and good to do it with her permission through a terminated process. So I was pretty much emailed back and told you'll fly, we'll go ahead and prove that you gotta go that route before you can direct. So that's where I stand with that.
Speed of government. I'll go back to my comments after redistricting. That's all I have. I just, I just can't wrap my head around that, and I've thought about it for two weeks. You know, people, you talk about retreat, right there on Main Street. You know, Barry Gwynn loves it when they put it right there at his house, cause he sits over the porch and watch people slow down, but he said it's entertainment.
You, you mentioned VDOT and, and I would like, just to let the board know, the, at Blue Star, Blue Star is hopefully having a groundbreaking ceremony here in, in a few weeks, details will be finalized on it. But I did send a message out to VDOT and ask them to do some, some cutting and stuff in there. And VDOT, I noticed yesterday when I was out there, they're already out cutting around the guardrails and everything else. So I'll, I'll express appreciation to them, but appreciate their help in, in getting the site ready.
All right, next item on the.
Sorry, Stephen, that I forgot. I don't know if the county did it or the VDOT, but I noticed Elmer is chopping corn right now and the road's pretty nasty. Can they double check tomorrow just to make sure that it gets cleaned?
I'll check with VDOT.
Saint Peters Road there, Elmer's farm.
The, the feed lot, Mr. Klein, or Chief Deputy Klein has a contact with a couple of people there. I'll reach out to VDOT and if.
I mean, I figure they will probably clean it up, but I just wanna, want somebody to check it to make sure.
If they've been warned, we'll make sure they clean it up.
I mean, I understand it's gonna happen and that's part of farming, they gotta do it, but.
Next item on the agenda is a closed session under section two point two thirty-seven eleven eight three, disposition of industrial or commercial property and acquisition of easements. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Make that motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. McCroberts, do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Now in closed session. Entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're now back in open session, Mr. McCroberts, if you'll read the certification.
The evidence certification of closed meeting, whereas the West County Board of Supervisors can ring the closed meeting and this day, so it's an affirmative recorded vote and then according to the agreement, I'll be Virginia Freedom Reform Act then, whereas section two point two thirty-seven twelve or the code pending a cross certification by the West County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in the form of the Virginia law. Now therefore, be it regarded, the West County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification was required. And only such public business matters as were identified in the most convenient closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the West County Board of Supervisors. No one could solve these questions.
Entertain a motion to approve that certification.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry, do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved, anything else, Mr. Bear? No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hankins, do you have anything? Yes. Mr. Martin, you have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Collins? Here and no other business, we'll adjourn.